Michael's going to share his screen so we can kind of follow along with, follow along together. So I'm going to get us kicked off. My name is Lisa Vargo. I'm a partner at Plant Moran in our K-12 group. And I was here last year, presented the information and I'm happy to be back again this year. So with that, I'm going to just jump right into the, the presentation here. So on the first slide, we wanted to really just take a moment and talk about like the key audit highlights. So altogether, we issued two reports. One report we refer to as a basic audit. And that is essentially your financial activity. And the other report we refer to as the single audit, which is the compliance audit. Different type of testing where the financial audit, we really keep in mind materiality. We don't look at every transaction and we work with management to pull together a financial statement report. A single audit, we have to abide by the rules of the federal government and that becomes a compliance audit. So every year, your programs will rotate and flip. This year, the program was a child nutrition cluster. And so when we test the compliance, our samples are large samples. We really don't get too much into the numbers in the compliance, but we look at, is the grant being followed the way that the federal government has dictated the grant to be followed? So all in all, I'm happy to report that the district was able to receive an unmodified opinion on both the basic and the single audit. What an unmodified opinion means is it is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors, that your financial statements and your single audit are free of any type of material misstatement. An item to note is through our planning process of the phase and through the work of our basic audit in the single audit, we are required to assess controls. And we look at, in this year, it was particularly important and challenging because we had to look at controls pre and post COVID. Which, because I'm sure is all you imagine and, and realize that there were a lot of changes as far as how work could have been conducted for a period of time. So we had to kind of look at it in both, both manners. And so it did come to our attention that there were some lack of controls related to the final reconciliation of the amounts for the final audit. But I just want to point out that although we did report that, as I dictate, as I just said, it was a very unusual year with this. And in particular at Madison, there was significant staff turnover. In addition with the working from home mandate and the additional work that the finance department had to deal with in regards to updating budgets, assessment of revenue, and that happened at both the state and the federal level. So there was just a lot of changes and a lot of things kind of going on right now. The other item that I wanted to bring the board's attention to is just keeping an eye up to what's going to happen in the 2021 calendar, the fiscal year. As we know, there continues to be uncertainty with the K-12 funding. Not really certain exactly how the foundation allowance and the revenue from state potentially could change, given this pandemic. Also, that really creates a lot of budgeting challenges. However, there have been opportunities for increased federal funding through the coronavirus relief funds and the SFR funds. But with the increase in federal funding, what comes with that is increase, increase work in the administration building to, to properly execute these funds and record them. So I just wanted to bring that, point that out to the board. On the next slide. This slide is really what we'll refer to as our balance sheet dates. We, these are as of 6:30. It's really like a snapshot in time. What we did is we wanted to compare what is referred to as the government wide compared to the general fund. The government wide statement is really, if you hear people refer to like Gatsby 34, but really what the government wide statement does is it brings all your fixed assets. It brings all your debt, your payables, your pension liability, everything together in one column. And that is what is referred to as the government wide statement. The general fund is really where we're going to focus because the general fund is really where the operations of the district are run through. On the next slide, so, so here's a little focus on the general fund. So this graph represents the comparison from budget to actual. And really what we're going to focus in on here is the discussion of the operational portion of the revenue and expenditure. So starting with the revenue. The largest, starting with the revenue. The state revenue, which is what we're going to talk about in the next slide, is the largest source of revenue for the district. And that, as I indicated earlier, had a significant amount of uncertainty up and through the end of the year. Due to, due to the pandemic, there was a $170, $175 per pupil count that was taken out of the August state aid. This represents approximately 200,000 of that revenue variance. In addition, there was some timing with the federal revenues. So to clarify, the governmental fund is recorded what is called a modified accrual basis. But what that means is the money has to come in within 60 days of the year end for it to be picked up as revenue. There was approximately $300,000 of federal revenue that did not come in until September. And so that revenue is not picked up here, but it will be picked up in next year. And those are the two key areas that really make up that variance. Now to focus on the expenditure side, this expenditure line item right here are, is your operations. So the actual expenses came in less than the budgeted by about 3%. We would like, we would look at a 3% variance as a accurate representation of budgeting. We also identified that there was a decrease in operational spending when you compare it to the last few years. And Michael's going to get into a little bit more detail of the expenditure side. A couple of other things to note that were a little unusual this year in the general fund was there is this transfer to the childcare fund, which was approximately 324,000. What that is, is because the childcare fund was closed over the last fiscal year, this money had to get transferred over to eliminate that deficit. The second item to point out is this other state supplemental. So this is funding from the state, which is meant to be paid back to the state. It's similar to an interest-free loan over a five-year period. So in a nutshell, those are the variances that I wanted to point out in the general fund. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael and he's going to go into a little more detail on what's going on in the revenues and the operating expenditures.
Thanks, Lisa. So as Lisa mentioned, the next two slides will, will kind of dive into some of the detail behind general fund revenue and expenditures. With this first slide focused on general fund revenue for the year ended June 30, 2020. Total revenue for, for the year came in at just north of $15 million. And as you might expect, the largest portion came from the state. So if you look at the orange and gold buckets, that is your state source revenue, which in total compromises about 71% of, of the district's total revenue. So this would include the states or the district's portion of, of the foundation allowance as well as categorical revenues. The, the gold state revenue amount coming in at 1.1 million or 7% of total revenue is related to 147(c), which is really relates to the district's retirement obligation. So each year, the state will, will provide some resources to, to the district to basically, to fund some of the, the district's retirement expense. So you see that money kind of come in as a revenue for $1.1 million, but also an expenditure. So it comes into the district and the district turns around and sends it right back to the state's retirement system to fund, to fund that obligation. So that $1.1 million in that gold bucket is a revenue and expenditure on the district's books for, for the year. So that's really a net, net zero wash. The next largest component of the district's revenue is local source revenue, which is in that, kind of that teal color at $2.9 million or 19%. This is compromised primarily a property tax revenue, which makes up about $2.1 million of that bucket. As well as revenue related to the, the Keith Charter program, which makes up about $500,000 in that pocket. Federal source revenue came in at $882,000. This would include IDA, some of your title revenues or some of your title programs. Again, these are federal dollars. So as Lisa mentioned earlier, there are strings attached to these, to these dollars and these would be subject to that single audit. Inter-district revenue rounds out the rest at about $520,000. This is revenue that comes in from, primarily from Oakland schools for, for different school head funding. One thing to note is, so Lisa mentioned that state supplemental payment of about, about $5.7 million. That would not be reflected in, in this, this total revenue of $15 million for the year in this graph. And then just, just as, as a point of reference, so last year's revenue came in at about $19.7 million. And I really want to highlight the, the efforts of the district as, so you can see there's about a $4 million decrease in revenue sources. And the next couple of slides, as we shift the expenditures, really kind of highlight the district's effort to, to, to kind of right sizing the expenditures in line with, with what the today's revenue sources are. So this, this first slide shows general fund expenditures by function as defined by the state. So function is really kind of looking at it as, as an apartment level view. So total expenditures for the year came in just above $16 million. And again, as I mentioned with, it's kind of that point of reference on the revenue side, prior year expenditures were about $20.5 million. So you can, you can see that, you know, the, the districts receiving less money and as revenue. And they're really making the, you know, the difficult but right decisions to, to decrease expenditures in line with those revenue, or in line with those revenues. So total expenditures down to $16 million on the year. Direct and indirect instruction makes up the largest component of that at roughly 60% of total expenditures. So this is really your resources that are being spent within the classroom. Operations and maintenance makes up the second word at 14%. School administration at 1.1% or $1.1 million. Transportation, just under $1 million. And then that, that service, that gray area there relates to that $5.7 million. The district is making kind of repayments to the state on that on a monthly basis. So that, that 993,000 is primarily related to that, to those, those repayments. This next slide takes total general fund expenditures of $16 million and just looks, looks at them in a, by object in a little different way. This is really kind of showing where those resources are being spent. So as you might expect for a school district being, being an organization of people, the largest component of that goes to salaries and benefits. Making up about 76% at, at $12.2 million. As, as I mentioned earlier, with that 147(c) revenue, that's really related to the state's, to the district's obligation for retirement. That $1.1 million of revenue is also included in, in your salaries and benefits expense for the year. So that would be included in that $12.2 million. The rest here, you see purchase services at $1.9 million, capital outlay at $263,000, supplies and materials at about four point, or at 4% of total expenditures. And then the, that state supplemental repayment amount at 1.55. So this, this next slide looks at general fund, fund balance for the year ended June 30, 2020. So now that we've talked about kind of the district's revenue, the district's expenditures, this slide's really meant to represent where, where the district ended in terms of fund balance. So total fund balance for the end of the year came in at $4.6 million. And I really want to highlight the components of, of what makes up that $4.6 million because there are a couple buckets that, that relate to some resources that kind of have an assignment to them. So you'll see those as assigned in, in the district's financial statements because there's kind of, there's those, a lot of those resources are being allocated for, for specific things. So I'll talk a little bit about that on, on this slide. So that, that kind of starts with the, the blue bucket, which, which would be the largest component of, of general fund, fund balance at $3.6 million or 80%. So we talked a little bit about that, that state supplemental payment that came in at, at that $5.7 million. The district, you know, made, you know, the state's basically taking reductions out of some of the, the foundation allowance moving forward to kind of repay that amount back. So the district did kind of repay some of those amounts during the year, but then there's also remaining amounts to be paid over the next four years. So that blue bucket is really saying, even though, you know, you receive that $5.7 million this year, which is, which is increasing your fund balance to that 4.6, that $4.6 million. A lot of that $4.6 million is going to have to go back to the state in future reductions of revenue. So that, that 3.6 is shown as, as an assigned fund balance because it is part of fund balance. But it is planned to be utilized in future years. The next component of, of that kind of assigned fund balance is, is kind of that gold category here at $654,000 or 14%. So the, the district would have adopted a, a budget for 2021 in which they were planning, in which expenditures were going to exceed revenue. So the accounting rules kind of say if that's, if that's the case, if, if the, the district's planning on, on utilizing some of that fund balance next year through that budget, that that gets shown as assigned in, in the year that, that budget was adopted. So a lot of that related to some of those future reductions of state revenue in, in your 2021 budget. As well as, you know, at the time when the, the first budget was adopted, you know, that we were hearing potential cuts in, in your pure pupil foundation allowance of up to $700 from the state. So that, that was reflected. There's a reduction in your per pupil in your 2021 budget. Luckily that, that did not come to fruition. And that, that state, and that kind has not, not occurred, but again, it's still because that budget was adopted, it gets shown as, as assigned. And that's, and that assignment would be similar to what a lot of districts, let's see, on their financial statements this year. So all in all, when you look, when, when you kind of look at that 4.6 million, what, what's left there is that unassigned fund balance of $290,000. So a lot of, again, the $4.6 million, a lot of that's kind of being assigned out for various things in future years. So kind of what's left, that, that doesn't really have any, any, any type of strings or plans attached to it. Is that unassigned at $290,000? So just as a point of reference, last year, general fund balance came in at about $168,000, which was primarily related to strictly an unassigned fund balance. So if you really want to look at just unassigned fund balance, the district did increase that unassigned fund balance by about $123,000. At, at the bottom of the slide here, there's just a couple statewide metrics to note, just as points of reference. There's the statewide average for the 20, or for the 19, 20 school year of the, the state often looks at general fund, fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. So the average last year was 14.2%. State, a lot of statewide organizations would, would say to kind of target 15%. For Madison, right now, if you just look, if you take out kind of all, all that fund balance where, where, you know, that's kind of being repayments back to the state and you really truly just look at the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your total expenditures, Madison's at, at just under 2, at under 2% of total expenditures. So this, this last slide is, is really just, you know, we talked about, you know, some of the challenges from a revenue standpoint. This next slide's really focused on kind of just an overall trend on retirement costs that are impacting school districts across the state of Michigan. So this, this shows a 10-year trend of the percentage of, of retirement funding per employee that, that the districts must face. So you can, you could see the significant increase over the last 10 years. For, for 2021, for example, you'll see that, that, you know, there's, there's different plans that employees can participate in. So this, this slide does highlight the higher percentage cost or the highest, highest cost of plan, basically. Which a lot of employees do participate in. So looking at 2020, for example, at 39.37%, basically every, every dollar of salaries and wages that, that a district makes, an additional 40% of that goes, goes to retirement costs to, to fund that retirement. I, I did talk a little bit about 147(c), so that there, the state is covering a portion of that 40, of that 40 cents. For example, for 2020, about 12% or, you know, 12 cents for every dollar is covered by the state. So the district's kind of out-of-pocket cost is 27 cents. There, that is kind of increasing over time as well, but for 2021, even with an increase in that 147(c) revenue, the district's out-of-pocket cost is still increasing a little bit over a cent for every dollar. So this, this slide's really just meant to highlight the, the challenges that a lot of districts are facing in, in terms of retirement costs.
And I guess I just want to add in one other point. I don't think I really said it much in the beginning. I do want to extend a lot of thank you to Edwina and her team. It was a very challenging year this year, to say the least, given the circumstances of doing an audit. And I bet did not go unnoticed. It was a lot of hard work and I appreciate everybody on your team, how much they cooperated trying to get this audit done and through. So a big thank you to you and your team. Thank you.
All right. At this time, does, do any trustees have any questions? Take that as a no. Can we get the screen back? There we go. All right. Is there no question? Is there questions?
Yeah, I have. So that 3, or 5.7 million that the state that we're paying back to the state, we have that down to 3.6 million right now?
So it's, it's down to, I, I know this part's somewhat misleading. It's technically included in, in your 2021 budget that, that year of payment is included there. So it's, it's really the 3.6 is kind of your long-term obligation from anything from, from after 2021. So it's really, it's really closer to like $4.8 million is what's left.
Anyone else? All right. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next we move into Board of Education action items. First one on the agenda is the adoption of the resolution regarding the Edison property. The attached resolution contains language with authorizes and directs Mr. Abdullah Had. Sign the purchase agreement and close the transaction with Keys Grace Academy, subject to the prior review and approval of legal counsel. So the actual motion is it's recommended the Board of Education adopt the resolution crafted by Thun Law firm as presented in the board packet. Would someone take that motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs.?
I'll take that motion.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Castle. Discussion.
Are we going to read this aloud?
Read the entire proposal?
The resolution. Are we going to read that?
I don't believe so. Have you read it in your packet?
Yes, but I would think that we would want to read it for the public.
I think if, if you read it to Mr. Kimball, it's on the resolution itself.
Yeah, I did that already. The attached resolution, well.
Do you see the part where it says whereas, and then again, whereas the property, whereas the board, whereas?
Mine starts out, Madison District. Public schools, Oakland County. A blank meeting, the Board of Education issued, the board was held in the, okay, the boundaries electronically, whereas investigated the sale of former school building to Collageal Department, New Scholars LLC and the purchaser, which property is located at 27321 Hampton Road, Madison Heights, Michigan, 4071, the property and more fully described in the purchase agreement, which is attached here too, made a part of attachment one, purchase agreement. And whereas the property is no longer necessary for the school district purposes and would be in the best interest of the district to sell the property to the purchaser. And whereas the board has determined that it would be in the best interest of the district to waive any applicable board policies or bylaws, if any related to the sale of the property and the sale of the property to purchaser. And whereas the board desires to authorize and direct Angel Abdullah Had, the superintendent of schools and his designate to execute the purchase agreement based upon the terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement to make any revisions to the purchase agreement not inconsistent with this resolution and to take other action to sell the property to the purchaser. With purchase agreement and other revisions being subject to prior review and approval by the district's legal counsel. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby waives any applicable board policies and/or bylaws if any related to the district's sale of property and authorizes the sale of property to the purchaser. The board authorize and directs Angel Abdullah Had, the superintendent of schools and his designate to execute the purchase agreement based upon the terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement to make any revisions to the purchase agreement not inconsistent with this resolution and to take other action to sell the property to purchaser with purchase agreement and other revisions being subject to prior review and approval by the district's legal counsel. All resolutions and parts of this, parts of resolution insofar as a conflict with the provisions of the resolution be and the same as hereby rescinded. Under sign, duly qualifies, acting secretary of the Board of Madison District Public Schools, Oakland County, Michigan, certifies that the foregoing consists of true and complete copy of the resolution adopted by the board at blank meeting held on, it'd be today, December 14, 2020. The original, which is part of the board minutes. You under sign further certifies, the notice of the meeting was given to the public pertinent to provisions of the quote, Open Meetings Act, Act 267, Public Acts of Michigan, 1976, as amended. That's the entire resolution.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pittman.
I just, if I could ask, in two different paragraphs, that resolution, it says, let's see. The board hereby waives any applicable board policies and/or bylaws, if any related to the district's sale of real property. Do we know? Are, are there any board policies that are applicable here that we are waiving?
This was drafted by Thun Law. Mr. Abdullah, can you answer that question?
I, I don't see anything in the bylaws, but they, they put that resolution together. And there might be changes to the terms. I, I believe that's what they mean by waiving any, any rights, but this is true in that, that produce this. We engage them in this matter, so they have a copy of our bylaws. And again, it also says if any.
Yeah. And I will say, I did not see any. I don't know of any. And I'm just asking if anyone else knows of any because I do not.
Yeah. I, I don't, I didn't see any, but I think they just put that in there. I, I would have to double check, but I'm trusting our, our true law firm to, to work with us. It's also saving us about $130,000 in
Commissions, yeah.
Commissions, yeah.
Brokerages, yeah. All right. Anybody else? Or are you finished, Mr. Pittman?
Yeah, I'm done. I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions?
That bill asked the same questions I wanted to ask was, are we aware of any policies or bylaws that we're going to be waiving? So that, my question as well.
All right. Anyone else? All right, then. All right, then roll call vote, please.
Wait, did someone make?
Yeah, we made a motion and Barb Castle seconded.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't hear.
It's all right. Roll call vote, please, sir.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, there was a fire truck that went by earlier. Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman? Ms. Scott?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
I don't think you got my vote, did you?
I have that you voted. Mr. Kimball?
Sure that wasn't Mr. Holcomb?
Just call his name again, Sarah, just to make sure.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, next item, temporary remote work policy for Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration compliance, MYOSHA compliance. Mr. Abdullah had a seeking approval from the Board of Education to establish a temporary remote work policy in order to comply with the Michigan Occupational Safety Health Administration, MYOSHA. The attached policy is set to expire April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one unless emergency rule five parentheses eight is otherwise extended and otherwise expressly extended by the board. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Mr. Abdullah's request to pass a temporary remote work policy in order to be in compliance with the Michigan Occupational Safety Health Administration, MYOSHA. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments? No? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, next item is the second reading and adoption.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Can I withdraw five five one seven point oh two from the second reading and adoption? Again, five five one seven point oh two, we'd like to withdraw that from the second reading adoption. It's being superseded by policy twenty-two sixty-six, Title Nine, which we will present to the board in January. So when you do the reading, if you could, again, not read five five one seven point oh two.
Okay. The Board of Education completed the first reading of the policies at the March second, twenty twenty regular board meeting. The policies need to undergo a second reading and adoption. Policy thirty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity. Policy fourteen twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal opportunity. Policy forty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal opportunity. Policy one six six two, anti-harassment. Policy two two six zero, non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. Policy three three six two, anti-harassment. Policy, which one did you exclude? Five five one seven point?
Oh, two.
Two.
Excluding that one, yeah.
Right, okay, so policy five five one seven, anti-harassment, and policy four three sixteen, anti-harassment. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the second reading and adoption of these policies. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. Second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle. Discussion. Need discussion. Now, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, next item. Use the box truck. A new box truck is needed to serve and support the Madison District in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred. The amount requested does not require a bid to take place. This truck will make it easier to transport goods. It is recommended the Board of Education give the superintendent permission to purchase a new box truck that see twenty-four thousand five hundred. Will someone take this motion?
I'll take it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Thompson, a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Discussion.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Castle.
The question I have is this amount is being requested, but it's, the statement says it does not require a bid to take place. I meant to call you today, Mr. Abdullah Had, and I forgot about this item. Can you explain why we don't need to place a bid out on this?
So the board policies and bylaws state that I cannot spend over ten thousand.
Right, I understand that.
However, state laws allow us to purchase up to, I believe it's twenty-four thousand nine hundred or is it twenty-five thousand, Edwina?
It's muted.
Okay. So what we're seeking is approval when we are shopping to be able to make a purchase without having to come back, wait for a board meeting, get approval, and then go out to purchase. So we're staying below the bidding threshold of state law?
Yes.
And we're getting approval because bylaws stop me from making any purchases over ten thousand?
That's correct. Thank you for clarifying that, both Mr. Abdullah Had and Mrs. Hill. Thank you.
Mr. Abdullah Had, is this replacing the truck we already have or it's also with the truck?
Well, the truck that we have is dying. It's, you know, transmission fluid. We've spent a lot of money in repairs. We're not trading it in, but we are trying to secure a new truck. This, we use this to transport food. If we have iPad carts or computer carts that we have to go from building to building, we use that box truck and we really need a functioning one.
Okay. Mr. Abdullah Had?
Yes.
Why aren't we trading it in? If it's going to die, we don't want an old truck sitting around. Why aren't we trading it in?
I don't know. I know sometimes people don't get the best value when you trade it in. I think it makes things complex to try to trade in and then I think it's cleaner if we just make a purchase and then use, you know, have a box truck as another one. We just like to invest in our own equipment and even though it's on its last leg, it's still functioning. And if they offer you three thousand dollars or three thousand, whatever they offer you, trade in, to me is not worth it. I'd rather keep what we have and try to invest in new equipment.
I have a question, Mr. Abdullah Had.
Yes.
I'm concerned that in just the last couple of months, we've had big purchases on, well, asking for this, and it was the lawnmower.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
And we had something happen with our our, what was it? Our, not our dump truck, but our lift on our
The plow?
The plow, right. So my concern is, are we, are our vehicles professionally sent out for maintenance?
Yeah, we work with a local shop. I believe outside maintenance works with, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe the shop is right here in John R. But yeah, they take it and have it serviced.
Okay, so we, so it's, we have, our vehicles are regularly serviced by not our maintenance.
Yeah, not our, no, yeah, not our maintenance guy. They don't do oil changes, tire replacements, things like that. Like the lawnmower we got from Weingard's. Right now, the transmission is leaking from the box truck. I don't believe they would do any of that. And so they would take that to the shop. Last time they replaced tires, they took that to Bell Tire. So they have a few businesses that regularly they go to for repairs and like the plow, when we bought the plow was, I believe it's just John R. North of eleven mile there up the road. I don't want to misspeak. I don't recall the name of it, but yeah.
I think it's Correct Auto Care.
Yes, so we use our businesses that we work with.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, like, they're on a regular schedule to be maintenance, to keep up the
I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if they're on a regular schedule, but yeah, if there is something that needs to be done, Ms. Scott, we take it and have it professionally serviced.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got a question. Where are we getting the funds for this truck? Is this part of another government grant?
Yeah, we're using, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hill, we're using our Gears funding?
Yes, we have Gears funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And we were
And approximately, how old is that truck? No, it's quite old.
It's old. I don't know the year, but it's
Right, the point I'm making, the lawnmowers, small plows, box trucks, these are all part of a normal progression of replacing equipment. Is that not true?
We, it is. You have to invest in your equipment, your property, you know, you have to make sure they're safe. And so we're, I believe it's a regular operational cost.
I believe the question was asked regarding the lawnmower. It was the same version that we had, that the old one was held on for spare parts. Is that correct?
Yeah, we kept the old one.
So this doesn't sound like anything out of the extraordinary that any company or other municipality would do.
So Mr. Abdullah Had, just to clarify, this is not coming out of our general budget. This is coming out of funding from
Gears. Yeah, we're not, we're not using we're just trying to shift monies as much as possible and make purchases as much as possible, not using our general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
And I believe, Edwina, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we don't spend down those funds, at some point we could lose them?
We'll lose it.
We will lose it. We have to, we have until September thirty of twenty-one.
So it makes perfect sense to use that money for something that we need. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, that's all the comments I've got. Anyone else? Comments or discussion? All right, Sarah, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Did we do a motion?
We did the motion.
Oh.
First and a second. Mrs. Thompson first. Mr. Holcomb seconded. We have discussion. We're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Kimball, I'm just trying to recall. I didn't hear the motion. Maybe it was just me. I didn't
I didn't hear it either.
I didn't hear the
Sarah, did you not record that down?
We did it.
Mrs. Thompson?
Okay, I'm sorry, guys. I'm getting old.
I'm sorry too.
We're all getting old, just like the box truck.
I hope nobody's leaking any fluids.
That's kind of a personal observation, Mr. Pittman. All right, last item, agenda topic hazard pay. Mr. Abdullah had would like to authorize an issue hazard pay at his discretion for the twenty twenty-one school year. It is recommended the Board of Education authorize Mr. Abdullah to issue hazard pay at his discretion for the twenty twenty-one school year. Will someone make this motion, please?
I'll take the motion.
All right, Mrs. Scott, thank you. I'm Miss Scott. Do we have a second? All right, Mr. Holcomb. Now, discussion. And before we start, before we start discussion, Mr. Abdullah, can you explain that these funds are coming from the same grant? A hundred thousand dollar grant, is that correct?
Yeah, we'd like to use our Gears funding to make hazard pay, a one-time hazard pay payment to individuals that are continuing to work.
Yeah, working frontline. So this is another, this is another situation that if we don't spend down this grant, we will lose it. It's not going to affect our general fund whatsoever. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
All right, now, Mrs. Scott, you had a question. Go ahead.
Yes, I know it says here, Mr. Abdullah Had, it says to issue hazard pay at your discretion. So can you, so all employees that are working, like physically working in the buildings, is that what we're talking about?
So we've identified about forty-three employees.
Would that include, I'm sorry, would that include all employees that are working in the buildings?
So if they have a direct connection with the students or if they're working with food, or if they're teaching during, during the time that we had, during the time that we had hybrid learning. So we had teachers and we had some parapros, we have bus drivers. This does not include any management. So this is purely our employees that are, which I honestly believe that no one would trade spots with them, given that they're in the front lines and it's a one-time payment. And I think it's more than deserved. I believe they deserve quadruple the amount that we're trying to do, but again, we're limited with that and we're trying to just show that we recognize that they're in the front lines of this pandemic.
And I completely agree with you, but what I really wanted was trying to find out is, say you have two employees that are working in the building.
Yeah.
Say a teacher and a custodian or a secretary and a custodian. I just wanted to, why wouldn't, why wouldn't everyone in the building?
If they had direct, if they had direct contact with the students, again, I would love to give it to everyone, but funding is limited as well. It's not like we, I mean, if we had it, we would distribute it. And if there's additional funds, we absolutely, this would give me the ability to, say hypothetically, we go back to hybrid and then we get some additional, then it would give me, this motion would give me the flexibility then to roll that out to everyone. Right now, there is special education teachers that were there, kindergarten teachers, GSRP teachers, while everyone else was doing remote learning. These guys were in the buildings with our students. Cafeteria workers never stopped working.
Right.
Custodians never stopped working and so ideally, yes, if we get additional funding, I would love to roll that out to everyone. Absolutely.
Because I, like I was saying, like custodians are in there cleaning the buildings. They don't have direct contact with students, but they're still in there. I mean, I would think that they would be considered hazard pay or secretaries that are in there working every day. They might not have direct
For this round, we didn't look at management. We didn't look at administration or secretaries, but we will definitely look at that as a second round.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Abdullah Had?
Yes.
We did look at some custodians, correct?
Yes, because custodians, if you remember, when we were in hybrid, every building had students in it and the custodians were cleaning
Right.
buildings while we had students in there and some of them were also assisting with food distribution.
Mr. Abdullah Had, so speaking about that, speaking about some custodians distributing food, I do know that there are secretaries. I mean, I know firsthand because Amelia was in school, but there are some secretaries that do have direct contact whether taking temperatures or whatever they may be doing. So you're saying they are not included in hazard pay?
In this first one, we didn't include them in the first list that we identified, but if there is additional, if there is additional funding left over, this motion authorizes me to identify more people. So absolutely, we'll be happy to look at that as well.
All right, because I would just like to see it across the board fair to anybody that is actually in the building because they're working.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're trying.
Right, okay.
All right, any, anyone else? No? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, the last motion has to do with the partial check registry for December. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the attached partial check register as attached. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, Mrs. At, thank you. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please, Sarah.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, that concludes the board action items. Board items, officer and committee reports. Do we have any? I don't believe we do, but no? All right, go to board comments. Yeah, let's start with Mrs. Thompson.
Thanks. I'd just like to.
Someone's gotta go first.
Tonight. And it was a nice, quick meeting. Everything went smoothly. Thank all the students for the hard work they're doing behind the scenes. You know, I have granddaughter who's virtual and just absolutely hates it. But she's doing it. You know, we gotta do what we gotta do. I'd like to say that I appreciate Mrs. Castle for all the time she's put in. Mr. Pittman, for all the time he's put in. I really, really, really hope in the future, there's a way for you guys to come back. And don't forget about us.
Gloria. Gloria, no thanks to Mr. Kimball.
Oh, Mr. Kimball knows how I. About you, Mark.
You're supposed to keep that quiet so Harold doesn't catch on to that. Okay.
Yeah, you said, don't forget about you, but you already forgot about him.
All right, I got a pretty thick skin. Mr. Holcomb, next, please.
Oh, I want to thank Plant Moran for the hard work they did with Ms. Hill and staff. I'd like to thank Bill, Mark, and Barb, gonna be missed. And looking forward to twenty twenty-one. I know I won the election by talking about Madison Project and my skilled trade. I'm gonna try, I want to thank the people for voting for it and I want to try to make you proud and I want to try to get it through. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Castle, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that attended our meeting tonight and of course, as always, the public comments are always welcome. Mr. Smith, thank you for yours. I want to thank all of the departing trustees for your service. I've thanked you before and I'm thanking you again. As Gloria said, you will be missed. Your, your, the value you bring to the board, the experience is going to be missed. I want to welcome and wish good luck to the incoming trustees. Good luck to you in January. And as always, I can't thank Mr. Abdullah Had and his staff, the front office, all the teachers, the custodians, bus drivers, kitchen staff, anyone I may be forgotten, and of course, Plant Moran, thank you for your presentation tonight. Edwina, for all your hard work and anybody that helped you behind the scenes. We appreciate you very much. And I would like to give you all my sincere best wishes for a nice or wonderful holiday season, as best as we can enjoy it this year. It's going to be different, we know that. Please stay safe. Stay well and enjoy the holidays. And lastly, I want you all to know it was an honor to serve the community and to work with all of you board members and Mr. Abdullah Had and his staff. This is a job that took me a while to to love and now I love it. I finally have come to love it and now I've got to leave it. But anyway, thank you all very much. It's been, we've had challenges, we have. But it's all in all, it's been a wonderful experience and I wish you all well. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
I just want to thank everyone for coming. Happy holidays and stay safe. So.
All right. Mrs. At.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you to Plant Moran for the presentation. Great job, Edwina. And thank you to the outgoing trustees for all your service, all your knowledge. Thank you to Angel for the masked presentation. That was very nice. And just happy and a safe holiday for everybody. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pittman, go ahead.
Yep, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and to all a goodbye.
Good night.
You don't want to quote Homer Simpson?
No, no.
Kiss my curvy butt goodbye?
No, no.
All right, I want to thank all the staff and all the other trustees and for the time they put in. Plant Moran, Mr. Smith for the positive comments. It's been a short four years and a very long four years. Most people know what, what I mean by that. I want to blame Mr. Abdullah Had for turning me on to Del Taco. I knew when the first taco was free, there was a reason behind that. I just want to say happy holidays to everybody. And everybody take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, can I get a, a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President.
Mr. Pittman.
I'd like to give one last motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that on Bill.
I was gonna say, do it, Barbara.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance.
Any discussion? No? Roll call vote, please, Sarah. Last one for some of us.
Mrs. At.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.
You know, if you wouldn't have made the motion to adjourn, we could have just kept on going. So it would have been good.
I'm gonna miss you, Mr. Kimball.
I wanted to say something too, but it wasn't, I'm gonna miss all you guys.
Take your word for that. Well, go ahead, Mr. Bill.
No, you know, it's, it's sad. It's sad to see this whole group go, you know, I'm gonna miss everybody, you know.
I had to joke about the Del Taco, but certainly gonna miss you, Mr. Abdullah.
Yeah, it's.
What, can I just say, even though you guys, you're not on the board anymore, doesn't mean that this is farewell forever.
I know, but it got sad when I heard Bill make the motion. Bill made the motion and then you.
I, I have to say, if I see you in the store, I'm gonna pretend like I don't know you.
Have a good night, guys.
I'm gonna have a good holiday.
Bye-bye.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Bye-bye.